I should say, in recent years, those kids kind of fall through the cracks, right? So, thank you very much. Uh, next report is from our superintendent, Dr. Stacy Gain.
Great, and McCoy, would you mind bringing up the first pictures? So, I have a handful of items, I just want to walk through some exciting pieces. The first is, I just want to mention, Ms. Jamie Lauer was one of fifteen teachers in eight states that was selected through, and McCoy's bringing up some pictures right now, a highly selective application process, so there's hundreds of applicants, and she sec- secured a spot on Lake Guardian, which is actually a shipboard fellowship, so they do training and research, um, and feel free, McCoy, if you don't mind, you can kind of just flip through, um, I think there's about four or five pictures. And these fellowships are really designed to give that hands-on experience and capacity building, and so she's working along three different scientific researchers, assisting them with their work on Lake Michigan. So, doing different water quality testing and zooplankton studies, um, looking at ancient civilizations in Lake Michigan. And so, really, she is also, just to note, assisting in the first-ever underwater archaeology research study, so really exciting work, um, going on, and just looking forward to her bringing that back to our students. So, thank you so much, Jamie, for all of your work, and what, what an honor to be part of that crew. So, awesome, awesome work. Um, secondly, just wanted to mention, as Ms. Lamb discussed, uh, congratulations again to Zach Lobert, Leanna Smithman, and Drew Kraus. So, Zach competed in aviation in the Skills USA. Leanna was displaying her skills in the First Aid CPR, and Drew in the Facilathon. So, truly great work, and a huge thank you to Brad for leading that group down in Atlanta. Also, wanted to mention, our marching band, um, came to the parade along with the cheer team, and, you know, that's just always a great event, um, certainly for our community. And just to note, Mr. Scott Helms, our A.D., was the grand marshal of the parade, so certainly an honor, um, for him to lead and represent HUHS as well. And then, wanted to note, our Maxwell Street Days, thank all the community members who came out and stopped by our booth. One of the many features of Maxwell Street Days was the Chamber of Commerce Dunk Tank. And so, it was the City of Hartford versus Joint One, as well as HUHS together. We teamed up to go against the city, well, not go against, but compete, um, pretty intensely, thanks to Mr. Volcard. And I have to say that the school district did win. So, kudos to everyone involved, um, Miss Luckt and Miss Geiger in particular from HUHS. The volunteers for Beautiful Hartford did receive a thousand-dollar check, um, with the combination of all of us. So, congrats, um, to the individuals who were all involved in that, as well as the Chamber of Commerce, Kate Carroll, and Barbara B. Meyer for just truly planning a great event. And also, wanted to just thank, um, Ethan and Mike for setting up, um, our whole, uh, te- you know, area tent and all of our pieces, that was really great for our community, as well as Ms. Hoppy, Dr. Schleewee, Ms. Lamb, Ms. Frings, Ms. Romo, Ms. Glorioso, Ms. Trapp, for really representing, um, our HUHS. And Ms. Peterson, and, um, Mr. Helms also for representing, kind of taking up and taking down. And I mentioned, just to really display that support of our school and community, was just really awesome to see. So, appreciated all of the support and excitement around, um, HUHS on that day. Just wanted to mention the back-to-school affair, as a reminder, we'll be kind of bringing this back and talking about this certainly, um, through social media and others, but the fifth and the seventh. So, a lot going on there, keep an eye out for that. And then, finally, wanted to discuss very briefly, and I'll pass it off to Mr. Nelson in a moment, but the budget impact, just in terms of, you know, what we know today is that certainly there is no more money in state aid. We're still at three twenty-five a student, in terms of calc- calculating the revenue limit. And I know you guys are aware that state aid and property taxes is essentially what composes that reven- revenue limit. So, really, we're waiting for the property values, which we get in October, as well as obviously our enrollment numbers in September, that third Friday count, our open enrollment, which really are two big factors in impacting those expenses. I think of no, one of the, um, celebrations, a special ed is slated at forty-two cent reimbor- or forty-two cents, oh boy, forty-two percent reimbursement, the first year, forty-five the second year. And so, we tend to really estimate that conservatively, probably at about forty percent. Um, but, you know, that, i- in the past year, we did outperform our budget, so really looking at probably estimating about a forty percent reimbursement to ensure that component. And so, obviously, the more money we get there, the less we have to transfer over. Uh, Mr. Nelson, is there anything additional you wanted to add related to just kind of a current, quick budget update, um, from what we know today?
Yeah, I think, I think you did a great job giving a, a good summary there. Um, the, the forty-two percent, um, is what came out of the state by annual budget, so year one, it's slated at forty-two percent. Um, if history shows us, right now, it's supposed to be thirty, you know, a third, thirty-three percent. Um, the actual amount, um, this year is going to be just, uh, just thirty-point-some percentage, right? So, a couple percentage points less, um, and that's just because they take all the costs across the whole state, across all school districts, and divide it amongst the pot of money, certain pot of money that they have. Um, so, I'll, I'll be updating my budget over the next month or two, and as, as, uh, she said before, using probably that forty percent to be conservative. Um, that'll give us a better idea of where it actually comes out this year, to see if the forty-five is, is going to be an accurate number for year two or not. Um, so, that's definitely a positive, uh, for us, because that could generate, uh, some significant dollars, again, that, that is revenue into Fund Twenty-Six, which is our special ed fund, which means there's less expense that we have to transfer from our Fund Ten to balance out that account at the end of the year. So, um, from a, from the state budget standpoint, that was a, a positive, that was a win for all districts across the, the state, as those, um, costs continue to go up, um, to have that additional, uh, reimbursement has been very helpful. Um, what I will say is, the three twenty-five per student in the, in the revenue limit, uh, calculation, and the seven hundred and forty-two dollars in per pupil, um, remained as they were, uh, for the last, uh, s- last two years. Um, and they're the amounts that I have in my current budget. So, uh, the, the biggest change will be, uh, projecting the new special ed aid for next year, uh, and then enrollment is our biggest piece after that, just to, to how many open enrollment students in, how many out, and how many actual students are in our building, um, that we calculate our revenue limit for, and that'll be compared to what we had projected, or what I had used in my budget for my assumptions. So, hopefully, uh, conservative, and the numbers come into our favor. The budget that was passed last month has about, uh, at the time, had about a four-hundred-thousand-dollar deficit. If everything else stayed the same with the special ed aid, that would drop it down potentially almost in half. Uh, but we'll have to see where the enrollment and stuff goes, so, um, encouraged by what we saw from, from the, um, legislature and, and the governor to get it done. I know, um, we, we kind of joked, we weren't sure if it was going to get done in a timely manner, if it was going to be a while. Um, uh, fortunately, or unfortunately, I guess, I'd say fortunately, uh, there was, uh, some significant dollars that were at risk in other parts of the state budget that helped get it over the finish line. So, um, we're, we're excited to move forward.
Great, thank you, Mr. Nelson. A couple of quick other things before we move on. Just wanted to mention, and Ms. Lamb is going to bring this, um, along with others in August, but our AP scores are in, and our percentage of total AP students who took the test with scores of three or greater was eighty-five percent, so a huge celebration. We had seventy-seven percent last year, sixty-eight percent the year before. And just kind of as a reminder, we want, obviously, students to obtain a three or more, to really be more likely to get that credit. Um, and so, while we dropped a few students this year, to keep in mind that we do have other opportunities, such as CAP, that allows for students to engage in that. So, huge celebration, really looking forward to that report coming up in August by Ms. Lamb and others. So, that's really a testament collectively of our whole system. And also, just in, I guess, to finally close out, wanted to welcome Mr. Patrick Doty, our new Director of Student Services, here again, excited to have you on our team. So, welcome, and thanks for coming aboard.
Any questions for Dr. Gain? Thank you, Stacy, appreciate the report. In terms of the school board report, I just have a few things here. You're noticing there's a lot on the agenda. You can tell that our administration and our, our staff that worked during the summer have been working very hard. Uh, there is actually a lot that happens in a school district during the summer months. And so, you can see that really a lot evident on this July agenda. Um, as we go through things on the agenda, know that some of these are very timely, that the administration is looking for us to take action on them tonight, because they are needed to be put in action for the district, such as handbooks. This is, this is a time here, we really need to make sure we get these handbooks, um, looked at, and edited, and approved. Um, there are also things on the agenda that might be, um, might be okay to take a first look. If we, if you ever feel like you need more time or more information, just ask during the meeting. I'd rather have you ask than regret later that you made a vote without having the information that you really want. So, just always be sure to just kind of chime in and, and ask those questions if, if you'd like more information before taking a vote. Um, there are also things on the agendas that you'll see that might pertain to hot topics, or emails were received, or things that our staff are talking about. Um, an example is our, our personal communication devices, um, policies that are on the agenda for this evening. So, that is something that, uh, I know that our administration, our staff, I hear questions out in the community all the time. Um, we, it's been a hot topic at different conferences we've attended, so that is on the agenda for this evening. Um, with some information, we can have a discussion, and it's one of those things where if that needs to continue, that can continue another time as well. Um, so just kind of wanted to give you a little bit of a rundown on looking at our, our board meeting agendas. Uh, we do have some upcoming workshops and meetings. We do have, um, a meeting and a workshop in August, as well as, as in September. And so, we're working on those agendas. I would love to hear from board members, because Stacy and I have a pretty big list of what we'd like to accomplish. And so, we'd like to hear from you in terms of what your priorities are. So, please feel free to reach out to me or Stacy, um, whether it's a phone call, or an email, however you want to do it. Um, if you want to give some input on what you'd like to be sure that we try to get to in the next couple of months for the school district. Um, let's see here. Yeah, so, some, and that's something to think about as we move forward, is that in the past, this board has had some committees. And so, you can see there's a lot of handbooks on this one, for example, or, so if handbooks are kind of your, hey, I really want to take a look at them, or if policies are kind of your passion, you want to dig in, let's talk about that as a board at one of our workshops, if this board would be interested in developing some kind of committees, or engaging with our administration staff to kind of help go through some of those things before a board meeting as well. That's always something that we can have a discussion about. And then, last, I do want to mention that, um, our HUHS family suffered a loss recently, um, in the, in the passing of Alan Ojala. And so, I just want to make sure that we, um, his family knows that our thoughts and prayers are with them, and our community is grieving that, because he truly was, uh, not just a great staff member here, but a really special man. So, really glad to have known him. And that's all I have for this evening. Um, any questions or comments for me? Okay, and we will go forward with our agenda. Next is our items for discussion and possible action. The first one is the referendum construction bid package number three.
There you go. Hello again. Uh, as Matt had mentioned, uh, generators are one of the things that it's on our radar in preparing freely for next summer, and looking to future bid packages, identifying some of those parts and pieces that are going to take a long time to procure. Uh, bid package three is solely focused on electrical equipment, switchgear, transfer switches associated with the work for next summer, uh, wanting to stay ahead of that. So, we put out an equipment-only bid package, uh, to essentially the same electrical contractors we've been working with, talking with, opening up those bids, and have the results here tonight to go for approval on. So, this bid package, um, as it was sent out, is equipment procurement only. So, the main switchgear generator, all the parts and pieces on the left side there. The initial package sent out was rated for two hundred KIC. This is essentially the, the maximum load that any of these pieces of equipment can see before they suffer, um, or have the potential to suffer damage that they can't recover from. When the bid package was sent out, we didn't have as much information as it had developed. In discussions with engineering, we determined that some of the coordination studies and, and further research on the existing buildings' equipment, we were able to lower that rating down to one hundred KIC, K.A.I.C. Uh, just, that's a much more standard rating, which also about halved the price point. Which, if you look at the results, Peiper Electric was one of the bidders who didn't submit an alternate along with their two hundred rating equipment to go to one hundred, because it's a more standard, and that's why their bid seems out in left field a little bit. Well, it's, it's because they were bidding a different set of equipment. But, um, all of the bidders, except for Peiper, had bi- alternates included with their package to go with the one hundred, if that was a eventuality, which it became. So, that actually helped us in our buyout, we didn't have to re-submit or re-request numbers from those contractors to get, uh, a lower rating. And by lower, it's not a lesser in any way, it's just the maximum load that that equipment could see without, um, two hundred, two hundred is, in the words of my estimators, like a unicorn-type equipment. It's, that's a very high load, something that a high school would almost never see. But, it's one hundred is more the industry standard. So, our, our bids came in with a very tight spread, um, for that equipment, so we know we're getting some very competitive, um, numbers. Another piece to why, um, purchasing these other parts and pieces along with the generator is when you buy them, similar manufacturers, it's a better package. It's like, uh, buying all the bells and whistles at once, as opposed to going back to them later, when they know you, they have, they know you, that you bought the first piece of equipment from them, and now you have to buy the second, third, and fourth pieces. If it goes together as a package all at once, there's significant benefits on the cost side to that approach as well, which is why we, uh, put together those five, technically seven pieces of equipment, so. Um, after, after reviewing all of those, um, the recommended, uh, action by the core team was to go with Next Electric. Next Electric and Preferred Electric are both already involved in the project through previous bid packages and approvals. Um, this kind of made sense to the team.
Any questions for board members?
Were they all going the same manufacturers for the equipment?
I believe of the five, uh, one hundred rating, four of those were the same generator manufacturer, and one was another. And then, all, just about the same. And then, the equipment, uh, the, the gear, and the transfer switches, et cetera, those were all the same manufacturer. So, really, the only difference was one of the contractors bid a, a different type of generator manufacturer, but it didn't, they weren't at the low or the high end, so that tells me that all the generator manufacturers were competitive. Yes, yep. Correct, this is equipment only. The labor to ins- basically, we, the extent of this package is their truck will bring the equipment to site, and then the future bid package will take it from there and put it onto its final resting place. That way, startups, warranties, et cetera, there's no crossover where this package set it, and there's finger pointing later, because somebody put it in place, but somebody else had to wire it. Um, really, we want the handling from the truck to start the second, uh, phase of work there. Yes, um, so initially, uh, the two hundred rating was about forty-five weeks, which would put us essentially back here in June to get it next year. Also, a benefit of going to one hundred KIC is under thirty weeks. So, actioning on this now, ordering it, there's going to probably be a month or two of storage before it's ready to bring to site, and then, um, but the generator, I think, was twenty to twenty-five. That main switchgear is really the longest lead within this package. I think that's still thirty-five to forty weeks. Square D, I believe that's made in the U.S. Um, might have globally sourced parts, but it's definitely assembled here, yeah.
Thank you for the questions, Kenneth. Anyone else have questions?
Uh, what was the initial, uh, initial budget projection for this portion of our referendum projects?
So, this is where the initial referendum, if you went back to the dollars, it has materials and labor both included. So, kind of breaking that piece out is a little difficult. But, when we compare the pricing that came in to what we would have budgeted for those, it's, it's a, we're right on budget with, with the equipment-only portion. To pick an arbitrary, well, there's this much labor involved with it, that's kind of a, is picking an arbitrary point. That really does, it could show savings, it could show overages, but it just depends on where we would pick that point. But, when we look back at what we would have budgeted for this equipment, that it's, we're right, right on track.
Thank you.
I believe overall, if you look at everything together, it was about four hundred and twenty-five to four hundred and seventy-five thousand. But that's also future equipment not included in the long leads, and then all of the labor put together. So, that line is kind of gray as to where, where it would land.
Okay. Is this a guaranteed price?
Yep, this would be executed, and we would issue purchase orders for this. It'd be on the books, we wouldn't have to deal with, uh, escalation, with delaying to order this until, you know, right before the date that we need it. Um, these are the numbers that they would proceed with.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Is there a board member who would like to make a motion for action?
Motion to approve the referendum, no, my glasses are on. Uh, for the construction bid package number three, as presented by C.G. Schmidt and Bay Architects.
And I would actually like to make a motion to amend that, to include, to make a motion to approve bid package number three, as Ken stated, um, with Next Electric, in the amount of two hundred ninety-four thousand and eighty dollars. Is there a second on my amendment to that motion?
All second.
Um, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Okay, so that motion has now been amended to include the verbiage with Next Electric, and two hundred ninety-four thousand and eighty dollars.
Do we have to do a roll, because it's the class?
Yes, we will do a roll call vote. So, we have a motion on the action from Kenneth. Is there a second on that?
All second.
Motion by Kenneth, second by Nolan Jackett. Any further discussion? Hearing done, we will do a roll call vote on the motion to approve bid package number three, as presented by C.G. Schmidt and Bray with Next Electric for two hundred ninety-four thousand and eighty dollars. We'll do a roll call vote, starting with Nolan.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you, that has been approved. Our next item for discussion is our policy seven four four zero point zero three, small unmanned aircraft systems.
So, wanted to bring this forward. Um, essentially, what we're looking at is a couple things. One, adding the opportunity for our, for example, athletics and activities, and as well as down the road, certainly, too, for classes, to be able to utilize drones for our students' benefit. And so, um, for example, this could be at, you know, a practice, for example, football is, is one example where many schools, districts are already certainly utilizing this option for their students, and really to have an advantage, um, to really assess various plays and things of that nature. Again, it also can be utilized for, certainly for classes as well. Um, so, amending that policy piece for that. And then, looking at the administrative guidelines, we added a reference to the high school authorization form for the small unmanned aircraft systems that essentially puts a process in place. If there are staff that are interested in utilizing that option, we would have an, obviously, a process. Um, and you'll see that attached as well, hopefully, uh, yes. Um, and so, ultimately, I wanted to bring up, in the administrative guidelines, and I understand that the board has not necessarily been formally approving those, but certainly, we've been bringing them here. We had initially looked at not allowing, for example, um, a team manager to operate the drone, um, and only, for example, a coach who had the FAA certification. And so, upon further discussion with our, for example, our coaches, we came to the idea that we would like to potentially have that option, um, with parameters and process put in place. So, for the purpose tonight, certainly to approve the policy, um, that's kind of the first piece. But then, looking at the administrative guidelines, really opting for some flexibility in allowing coaches, for example, who have the certification, but maybe feel, for example, a team manager might be better suited to operate that drone. And this isn't something where, you know, kids are flying things all around the school. This is obviously limited to many of these situations, the drone is going straight up, recording, and coming straight down. So, wanted to, um, highlight that, I guess, in the administrative guidelines. Currently, we have that crossed out, but wanted to put that forward as an option for our staff with the approval and the authorization form. Um, that is just kind of the general overview. We certainly are going to see more and more of the drone use, both from an academic standpoint, potentially athletics and activities, this is something that I don't think is going away. And so, moving forward, wanted to put some parameters in terms of how we are operating and, uh, providing opportunities for our students.
Any questions from board members? I know I asked Stacy about the legality of having someone certified versus not certified. Anyone to share that response?
Sure, so certainly, um, having the, we already have a few staff members who, um, have that certification. There obviously is FAA guidelines around various things, when you're operating, how you're operating, things of that nature. So, those individuals, you know, from an insurance standpoint, should, you know, the drone crash into something, um, would be covered. There is some gray area around, you know, for example, if you had a team manager operating that particular drone, you know, that would be a question for our, you know, further for our insurance, um, company in terms of how and what would be covered in that area. So, I think at this time, again, just really advocating for the process, to really put that process in place for the request, as well as the policy, and we can further explore that administrative guideline piece as far as opening it up to opportunities, um, for, you know, for example, a team manager within two arm lengths of a certified coach could operate. And then, what does that mean in terms of insurance impact and things of that nature? So, this kind of just came to us, um, within the last, I don't know, maybe week or so. And so, really didn't want to pause on moving it forward, is, in terms of a process for opportunities for our kids, but also wanted to make sure we explored a couple pieces further as well.
Thank you. And thank you for being so transparent with the administrative guidelines and including the form that's been, um, drafted. I think that's very helpful. Anything further from any board members, or a motion for possible action?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve policy updates to policy seven four four point oh three, small unmanned aircraft systems, as presented.
Motion made by Nolan, is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by Tiffany, any further discussion? All those in favor of approving policy seven four four zero point zero three, small unmanned aircraft systems, as presented, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed, say nay? And that has been approved, thank you. That's fine. We're just going to take a moment to shut the door to cut down the noise a little bit. Oh, maybe she's done. Okay. Um, and, uh, we did discuss the, the next one, which was the administrative guideline. Thank you for wrapping that up in there, that is not something that needs to be approved by the board, it was just there for a discussion. Uh, next item for discussion is policy five one three six, personal communication devices.
Great, so first, thank you to certainly the staff and community members who have had discussion around this and brought it forward. Um, in just a minute, I'll ask Ms. Lamb to please just kind of provide us a past history of our process and procedures. But before we do that, just wanted to point out a couple of quick pieces. Um, one, I know, and some have asked, you know, why do we go with, for example, a Niola, um, company to really update our policies, and what does that mean? Uh, essentially, we look to go, we, we do, um, contract with Niola, really in terms of keeping our policies up to date. They do have a legal counsel, obviously, that vets those out. And so, having the templates, we always have the ability at the local level. And so having the templates, we always have the ability at the local level to customize those. Um, but really allows us to keep our focus on certainly the education and be efficient and effective in those policies. Um, and again, really look at how are we uniquely tailoring to our community values and specific circumstances? And so, um, just something to keep in mind in that regard. Um, we, if you look at certainly the attachments, we have our current policy, which we utilize. And again, in a minute, Ms. Lamb will kind of walk through our, uh, kind of the procedures and things like that in process. Also attached was a request for the will policy as well. So I just wanted to talk specifically, just very briefly, um, in a comparison of both. Um, so in terms of both of the policies are really looking at creating, obviously, an environment that prioritizes the academic engagement. And overall student well-being, that's all of our goals when we look at the personal devices and things of that nature. Um, within the classroom. And so also just wanted to point out, certainly in terms of the, um, the will piece. We in practice have, and Ms. Lamb will talk about this in a minute, but certainly have designated location, um, of pouches that we're increasing and providing to staff in the classroom. So I know that's mentioned specifically, um, in certainly the will policy as well as both policies cover. You know, when we have an emergency instructional purposes, if it's approved, uh, certainly by staff, IEP team, things of that nature. Those are exceptions to having that phone stowed away. Um, and we don't, you know, I guess one of the difference when we look at the enforcement, for example, in the will policy. Our campus support, we don't ask teachers certainly to take phones away physically from students. You know, we have, um, administration or campus support, for example, that really, um, talk through that piece with students. So, um, I would say just in general, obviously, the goal of our policy is to really ensure that we're maximizing those. Um, you know, the instructional minutes, the well-being of our students and ensuring a safe environment for our kids. So certainly at this time, you know, we feel our policy is, the current one we have in place is certainly, uh, strong. And feel that it's, um, you know, working well for our students. I think looking at what is our current process, practice, procedures. Uh, and we continue to take a look at that and how we can improve and enhance and support our teachers and staff who are the ones who are actually implementing. So I think as we move forward, continuing to get input from our families, from our staff as to, you know, what they feel is working well and what might be challenging and how we can best support them. So with that said, I'll let Ms. Lamb take over and provide just a really brief overview of kind of where we've been and where we're at.
So as I'm entering my fifth year as principal, before I came here, there wasn't a set cellphone policy. So what we decided to do is looking at staff input, student usage, having a focus on making sure student learning is happening. And looking at other research on how cellphone use does affect children, especially high school children. Because I do think when we're looking at cellphone policies, a high schooler is much different than an elementary school student and a middle school student. So after taking all that information, I think maybe my second year, we implemented it starting fourth term. That we're gonna kind of be a little bit more strict on cellphone use. We do have teachers that utilize cellphones in the educational setting and there was some strong feelings about allowing kids to use a cellphone if it benefits the learning environment. And that's something I did not want to take away from a teacher, but at the same time, we need to ensure that they're using it appropriately. So as a strategy is, it is up to the teacher's discretion to explicitly tell a student if they are allowed to use it for instructional purposes or not. The teacher decides that, not the student. If the cellphone is out, we kind of have very clear cut rules, uh, teacher will say, please put it back. If they do not agree, they do have to put it in a designated location in the classroom. If the student says no, we tell teachers, we are not getting in a debate with the student because it will go nowhere. There are some kids that are very protective over their cellphone and they don't want to be away from it. That is not a place in a self, in a classroom to engage in that debate. So I tell a teacher, you'll never touch a cellphone, you will not argue with the kid on a cellphone, administration will help you. So if they do not turn in the phone, which if they did, they get it back at the end of class. We will call down to the office, the campus support assistant will go to a classroom or administrator. And then we'll bring them down to the office and then they do need to hand the phone back. So this is their second attempt in order to keep their phone. Um, at the end of the day is that they can give it to Ms. Rolsmann, myself, and then they cannot get the phone until the end of the day. So we try to get the student, give it to the teacher right away, so at least you can get it back at the end of the hour. If they don't want to do that, then they're gonna have to give it to the office and they don't get it back till the end of the day. If they continue to be defiant, that goes another stop. And that's just when we call a parent and say, now it is a suspension, we do not argue about cellphones. It is a lose-lose situation, but if we do have a parent that says, no, my kid's gonna give you the phone. We'll always support that parenting and that is a chance that we will take the phone and then the kid can go back to school. So we do want to have that relationship with parents and guardians because we do respect that and we want to do what's right for kids. So that has been our pol- or practice and policy throughout the last couple of years. I know obviously implementing things is tough is because kids are very smart when they want something. For instance, we try to keep up, but there is obviously smart watches. Some kids take a couple of cellphones as a dummy cellphone and they kind of try to find ways around it. So that is a tough piece and that is something when we're looking at high school people, when we're looking for a full ban versus something that they need to learn how to use. All of us in the room as adults, in our current profession, our current life, we need to know how to use a cellphone appropriately. And that is a huge aspect of digital literacy. I know our staff with Val, we've always talked about banning doesn't necessarily help if you're not teaching kids how to appropriately use a cellphone. So that's where we're kind of in a balancing act with. And looking at different research, so research does state, cellphones and social media is not good for the developing brain. That has been established, but what hasn't been established, does a ban work or does it not? It is too new and there hasn't been a lot of research to prove one way or another because they do say kids have working hours. And if you continue to ban stuff and avoid them from using it in a positive manner, how will they learn? So that is kind of the items that we are discussing and we continually want input in order to make it the best possible learning environment for kids, but not just here when they get in a job. Because they are gonna have a cellphone in most jobs. I mean, I'm sure you've gone to different stores and not seen workers use it appropriately when you're trying to get help, they may be on the cellphone. But we're trying to be proactive in that nature. So one thing is that we have been doing, and I think when things organically change for the better, that's when we can get full buy-in. For instance, as she was saying, we had specific cellphone pouches that has gained in popularity with our staff, which has been huge. So now that we've been on that coattails of those, we are gonna offer that to all staff. So that can be something that is the same throughout our school. And since we've already had that buy-in from teachers, I think that's gonna go a long way. So we constantly think of ways how we can help kids with the cellphone, ban, not ban, and how we can progress in a positive manner to create the best learning environment possible.
I have a question for you, Kelly. So I'm just trying to picture it, I asked, I did ask some recent students. What, what did you see being done? What are these pouches? Cause I don't know, they, they describe it more like a, like a pocket chart? Is it like a, with multiple pockets and they just put their phone in one of the pockets?
It's number one to like thirty-five.
Okay, okay, so something up near the front of the classroom with the door or something. Okay, alright, just wanna make sure I had an understanding of what was being done.
So it's each individual pocket, I mean, back in my day, it's like where we put in calculators or something.
Sure, okay. Thank you, just trying to, trying to picture it.
Um, I will say we do tell students, because I know, oh, kids still have my cellphone, you bring your cellphone at your own risk. That is a valuable item and they need to know the risk going in. We are not responsible if your cellphone is taken at school. So they do have the choice to not even bring it to school. Obviously, if it is taken, we do the best to try to find it, but that is something that you are choosing to bring.
Okay.
So a- as far as the teachers using them for educational purposes, sometimes I, I do recall that from my last couple of years in high school too. But what, uh, can you use the phones for that we can't just do on the Chromebooks that we already pay for and provide?
And that's also a good question, sometimes just the sheer size of a Chromebook versus a cellphone. When you're going like this to video, you can't really video necessarily with a Chromebook going around or a picture or different apps. I think it's just the convenience of how technology keeps evolving that kids know also how to use a cellphone. I'm not sure if Val, you want to also state, um, there's many different things.
I can give you an example of what I just saw in the classrooms, like last couple of weeks of school. I was in a social studies classroom and the social studies teacher asked the kids to get out their phone and text their grandparents about the Vietnam War. And talking about that and asking them questions and you should have seen the engagement of the kids and the responses of the grandparents to their kids about their feelings and all that. It was such a moving discussion that wouldn't have happened otherwise. And it was so cool because even the grandparents were talking, my grandpa just said he loved me. And it was just really a cool situation and really interactive and bringing the community into the classroom.
I will, I will say too, I recently just conducted some research with my seventh grade class, actually in ELA. Um, on the effects of social media use on development of teenage kids. Um, so I had my students as well bring their cellphones to class. Um, and when they brought their cellphones to class, I didn't say anything and didn't give them any direction. I just said, how many of you, the first thing that you did when you got your cellphone, opened up your social media apps? And almost every single student in my classroom raised their hand. So it just goes to show like, just to kind of show them the impact that social media has on them. And to, you know, use it for other research purposes, there's a lot of different ways that we can use it. Um, but I think having a, a solid policy regarding that use is really important as well.
Again, I wish every kid was not on social media, that would make it a non-issue. Um, but we also know and we do, I have a lot of conversations with parents asking us like, what can I do? And even there, there's issues at home, you know, my kid is taller than me, they're bigger, this is high school kids now. And my kid won't go to bed, they're on their cellphone until two in the morning. There are some things we can't control, we try to help them and we try to give suggestions. And that's the tough part too, because with technology and social media, can't just not use it at school and then think they're not gonna use it outside of school. And that is something we constantly talk about is, you know, stuff is going on outside of school. Technically, it's outsider jurisdiction unless it comes into school, there, there is a tie. So there's some trash talking that's going on on Snap, Snapchat. Then they come in and then they go face to face, then obviously now it's an issue. But that is something that we also battle. I know at the ITCE conference, we were talking with Meta and they are now trying to combat bullying, cyberbullying with Instagram. So we've now just asked to be involved and they started with a pilot, moving forward, how, if there's any cyberbullying on Instagram. If you're a school, they're gonna look into it, it'll wait quicker turnaround. So instead of waiting weeks for it to come down, it's between a twenty-four to forty-eight hour turnaround. So there's also things that social media is trying to do that we're very appreciative for. But it really is not just a school issue, it's a societal issue as well.
For sure, I'm, I'm currently reading a book by Catherine Price called How to Break Up With Your Phone. Because you're right, it's a societal issue, I mean, adults get addicted to all the social media and unhealthy things on their phones as well, so, yes.
I attended a, a meeting and, um, they were talking about it and it, there's a couple of things that disturbed me on a lot of different levels. But one was the executives of the social media do not let their kids go on the social media. So that right there is a big, big alarm, you know, that's one thing. And, um, that's more the technical ar- arm of it. But there's also the societal element and if we, as a community, high school educational group can try to educate the students that you're gonna walk out of here in twelfth grade. And if you don't have good acumen, business acumen, human acumen, whatever, if you don't have good, um, s- social media skills to take into the workplace, they're not gonna be any better off than if they walk around with it nine through twelfth here. Or if they walk around with a K through eight. I mean, I think i- in my walk of my profession, I can tell you those that are just, they're on it constantly. They sit in a meeting with it and I just want to kick them under the table. You know, I'm like, I can't believe you're on this, this call while the president's talking about something or whatever, you know, and so there's just a, a, a discipline of being respectful using it. And no matter what's decided in, in this whole realm, when they walk out of the building, twelfth grade graduation. Hopefully, they have the great, um, I don't even know what to call it, um.
It's really digital literacy is the scope of everything and educating them about how to appropriately use that technology.
Right, and people's skills, you know, it's, it's, it's just plain rude, first of all, when someone else is talking to be on your phone. Um, my kids know not to have that phone at the table and we were at a dinner and the one, this one guy was on it. And I'm like, who else at this table can you be texting? We're all here, enjoy the moment, you know, so there's just a learning curve. And I'm, I told the person, I'm like, you're a bad influence on my kids. So, you know, call it, call it like it is. But the other arm of it is, there's a place and time for everything. The other thing that I have, that, so there's three things. So the first one is the executives not doing that. The second one is just teaching them good, good personal skills using it. The third one is, which drives me insane, is we have to teach kids that people will say things and they'll never say it to your face. I always say, if you're gonna put it in words and you're gonna, you know, put it out there on Facebook or whatever, if you can't say it to my face, there's issues with that. And so we can teach people that people hide behind that and we need to soften that emotional connection they make. That someone says something so horrible or so, so vile or whatever about them, that it's really not to take it personally. Cause if that person can't say it to you personally, you know, maybe the grounds are just, you know, learn to ignore it. Um, you know, so there's a whole mental health and well-being element of it too, that I know that we've touched on in the committee, so.
Well, and that person that's stating those facts on the computer or Twitter or whatnot, they may not even be a real person. And that's another thing, they don't even know if that person exists or it's a robot or AI, there, it just is such.
There's like a whole element of social media, emotional well-being that we can address regardless of the policy. Um, just moving forward because they're gonna leave here in twelfth grade and they're still gonna have that phone on them, no matter what. And they're still gonna go to social media and just to have the best, um, practices and to turn it off. You know, the studies of keeping your phone on until two in the morning, you know, that's just so unhealthy and it's not gonna carry well in the workplace. So I don't know, maybe there's an arm of it, no matter what we decide here, that we can, we can help them be the best they can be when they have their phone.
And that's why I think our policy right now does that because we do limit instead of, unless it's directly related to instruction and it's per the teacher's choice. And I think everything, every policy we have, we have the same hurdle is how are we making sure that we're implementing it correctly? And how to enforce it? I mean, that is an issue everywhere with any policy that you have. And that's something we are diving into to make sure that we are enforcing it. And I think it is with human nature, where's that line be, oh, I want to be friendly for classroom management instead of, oh, I don't want to be hard on it. And that's always something, you know, we go with teachers as they learn, as they grow up and grow, so. But I think right now, we have that great in-between to allow that to enhance and to make sure it doesn't deter the learning.
In the last four years, have you ever had any problems on the end of, uh, teachers not properly enforcing this policy strict enough?
I wish I could say no, but in reality, we've had a couple. You know, there's some that are very strict and when I tell the staff in the beginning, your worst enemy is a person next to you. Because you have to all buy in or not buy in. So we have made gains though, I will say, we have been growing because they're finally sick of it. As I said, organically having that pouch system in place. That was driven by teachers, which is huge because as admin or any leader, you just telling people what to do doesn't mean they're gonna implement it. But if we can work together and see the benefits, that's where we're at right now. So we have seen growth and supplying this, I think, will even make it better because then they know an. And supplying this, I think will even make it better because then they know in every classroom, the expectations are the same to try to make it more consistent. I think that's going to give us another like up next year as well.
Kelly, I have a question about the, uh, I mean, I think it states it here clearly enough. I just wanted to clarify. If students are not using their cellphones for instructional purposes. Students have the ability to store the phone in their backpacks if it's turned off and not like on vibrate or silent or anything like that. They don't necessarily have to use the pouch.
Right now it's not required. A lot of them do because they want to see it. Yes, but if a student goes, I don't want to because I don't have, feel safe. I don't want to take that over because then that's another discrepancy. So, but yes, if they choose to put it in, but it has to be out of sight. So obviously we see it on the desk in the pouch.
Perfect, thank you.
Then that would be the office. Oh, yes. It's generally ones. We keep it a document when it comes to the office. And we, I'll say admin is pretty hundred percent consistent. I ask once, they say no, I call a parent right away. And then sometimes they hang up because they gave me the phone. I'm like, alright. At the top escalation, we do not have data on them just bringing the phone. I will say, when we first implemented this. Our suspension rate was pretty high because I think they didn't realize we meant business. And after that initial phase, our suspensions has decreased significantly. Because now they just give it to the office and then, or they give it to a teacher. So I am happy about that, that those suspensions have decreased. But I will say in the beginning, we had quite a few suspensions. I, I mean unfortunately was that first year, I probably had. At least one or two a day for the first two weeks. And that's not nearly what we have anymore. And I think kids are also, after being four years here, five years, they know our expectations. And at the end of the day, we do have very good kids. I mean, the behaviors here, I would say compared to other schools, it's pretty impressive with how good they are.
And I would think in hope that our staff is also demonstrating um, healthy behaviors when it comes to using your, your phones during the day as well.
I probably don't carry my cellphone to a fault.
That's alright.
But they always find me.
Any other comments or questions? This was an item for discussion?
Um, I do want to say thank you guys for sharing your perspectives. It really means a lot to come together, to talk about this, to be open and discuss it. And ensuring we're doing what's best for kids and teaching them appropriate use of this type of communication device.
Absolutely, thank you. I was, I was hoping by putting on a meeting agenda, we might get some of those parents or community folks or even students show up to talk about it. But it is July. So it's not the most ideal month for people to be watching, hey, I wonder what's going on, you know, the school board is to show up at a meeting. So please let us know if it looks like this becomes a hot topic again in the future. That you're like, you know, I think there are some parents who do really want to talk about it or meaning, just, just keep us on top of it.
Yeah, and I just wanted to say thank you to the parents, uh, Ms. Lam and I, and certainly others from the high school team. Have had parents reach out to share their thoughts, suggestions and ideas. So they might not be able to necessarily come to the board meeting. But do appreciate that continued input and huge thank you to the high school team as well as our entire staff for really supporting and being consistent. Cause kids recognize that immediately, so. Thank you.
Okay, so hearing no further discussion or possible action from the board members, we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda. Which is our twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six academic standards.
So I will just say, this is a great segue. Digital literacy standards, if you are interested, are also listed on the content area and district standards PDF. Um, that is in the attachment for this action item. Val, we just talked about this the other day, that they're still updating those digital literacy standards. But we're planning for second semester to be able to review the updated digital literacy standards. Is that correct? So if you, if you're looking for digital literacy standards, they are in that PDF that's listed as an attachment. But um, they will be updated once we adopt those um, second semester. But for agenda items E and F, those are both annual notices that we bring forth to the board. Typically in July, um, just to identify academic standards that we're using. And then also the annual notice for parents, um, just informing them about educational options that they have. Additional information is on the website, which um, is linked in both of those items.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from board members? Is there a motion for action?
I will motion to approve the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six academic standards as presented.
We have a motion and a second and I'd just like to note that this was also how they are listed on the school website. Is that correct? Okay, thank you. Um, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed say nay. That motion carries, that's been approved. Thank you. Next item is the um, as Stevie mentioned, the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six educational options. Stevie, is there anything you'd like to add here?
Nothing additional, just again, a reminder that it is an annual um, item that we bring forth. Additional information is on the website for parents and families if they'd be interested in looking at what educational options we do offer at HUHS.
Thank you. Any questions from board members? Hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and make the motion to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six educational options. As currently listed on the Hartford Union High School website and presented this evening. Um, is there a second? Motion by myself, second by Nolan Jackett. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed say nay. That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next item for discussion is the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six employee handbook.
So just to start off, I would say just in general, as we're reviewing the handbook, we're really looking for three pieces. One is just the general flexibility. So does it provide us certainly administrator and staff flexibility? Is it fair to our employees and certainly just philosophically, does it align with our organization? And so had some minor changes to our employee handbook and I'll let um, Mr. Nelson kind of take over. If there's anything in particular you wanted to highlight in that.
And it was reviewed by our attorney. So he um, had a few uh, minor tweaks throughout the document. Just a few things I'd point out, um, we added uh, Pat, Patrick as one of the two Title IX coordinators in addition to myself. Uh, last month, we made some title changes, um, and one of those was uh, my title, removing the executive from the title. So that's probably a lion's share of what you saw as red marks uh, through the document, uh, just changing that. In the uh, staff wage matrix area, um, we realized uh, we had missed one or two categories last year. Uh, so we added those. Um, and then um. We, at the last meeting, we added uh, that summer student worker. So we added that into the wage uh, matrix as well. And uh, in the sick leave bank, we didn't make any changes to the sick leave bank, but there is some discussion we'd like to have during the year. Uh, with staff to, to maybe look at revising that uh, area potentially. But there was one area where there was a duplication of, of wording, so we took that out. And then um, corrected a reference to a different section of the employee handbook uh, in that area. So um, not too many uh, what I would call significant changes this year.
Thank you for explaining those changes. I did notice some of the, the may versus the shall changes allowing for that flexibility. Um, that makes sense to me. Um, I, I think that everything in here looked very practical. One thing I would just ask this board and this administration to consider. Which seems kind of strange to me in some of our policies and some of our handbooks is um, sometimes we refer to the board or the district. And so even like, so on page eighty-three of this employee handbook, it says, the use of the internet is a privilege and not a right. The board's internet connection is provided for business and educational purposes only. To me, that just, it feels kind of weird like these five people as a board own the internet for the district, like really it's the district's internet. So I'm not going to say we go back over all of these handbooks and tonight and like take a look where we want the board versus the district. I'm just asking that we please consider that moving forward to see like, what, what term do we really think makes the most sense in each of these places? And like I was telling Stacy, it might take us a year or so to kind of like, as we're encountering things, but it'd be kind of nice to get into that mindset. I think also we've established a very healthy collaborative decision-making relationship between the board administration. And so I think when we say the district that encompasses all of us, and I think that that's a very healthy place to be. So just, that's just my personal opinion. Um, any other comments or questions from board members? Is there a board member who would like to make a motion for action?
I'll make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six employee handbook as presented.
Is there a second?
I second.
Motion by Nolan, seconded by Tiffany to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six employee handbook as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed say nay and that is approved. The next item for discussion is our parent handbook.
Yeah, and the parent handbook, student parent handbook, we actually just had a minor change just in terms of putting in a link to our registration. So allowing the opportunity to have that link to registration, I believe it's the ACT. I have to go in there and take a peek. Um, but really a minor change, not a whole lot of major changes to that handbook. You know, obviously updating board member information, things like that, just some of the personal pieces. We always update the dates for testing so that there's a reference for parents, um, eliminating any information. Obviously that's not applicable for uh, future current graduating classes, um, some of those pieces. So not major changes to that, but certainly something we like to continue to take a look at each year. So, um, yeah, I don't know if.
And the addition of the drone policy I saw was in here too.
Right, good, good point to point out. Uh, we did add that as well.
Any questions or comments from board members? Tiffany?
I have a question. Um, I actually had some students ask me about um, the pass policies. How students are given passes to leave, to go to the restroom or to the health room. Um, can somebody just provide some clarification? I tried looking in the handbook. I didn't see anything explicitly. So.
Absolutely. I see Ms. Lam heading down right now, so I'll let her, her jump in.
It's not explicitly stated because there is, obviously we're never going to deny a person a bathroom pass. So I just want to state that right away. If somebody needs to use the bathroom, they will use the bathroom, we'll allow that. But an issue we have been getting into is kids being in the hall quite a bit. And abusing the bathroom privileges for not having to go to the bathroom. So because of that, with the data we found, kids in the halls, kids overstaying their welcome in the bathroom, not using the bathroom to use the bathroom. Which is unfortunate, is what we do is basically you get a pass a block. So we say three because during lunch, you have that lunch period that you shouldn't, you can use that time to do it or passing time. So we say seven minutes. On average, most people don't use seven minutes. We just actually looked at the data about a week ago or around bathroom passes, the ones that were started and end. The average was well under seven minutes. I still keep it at seven minutes because at the end of the day, if it's not affecting anything, they're using the bathroom how they should be. And that's a positive thing. Um, there's kids that say, oh, I don't know. Anytime you need to go, we tell the teachers. You're not denying a kid a bathroom pass. And that was the rationale behind it. And I will say last year, our hallways were hundred times clearer and a lot of people around here can shake their head. That has made a major impact, keeping kids in class, learning rather than out in the halls.
So there's not necessarily a time limit between when, you know, say they have to use the bathroom at the end of first block.
Generally, it's not the first ten or last ten minutes because that's when you have the passing periods. So if you're not using the passing periods appropriately, like even after first block, we have a longer passing period. So that should be enough times. I know they're like, well, we try to go and, you know, the bathroom's being used because we don't have enough stalls. Obviously we're going to work with the student if they have a track record of using it appropriately. But yes, generally speaking, and I would say that ten minutes at the beginning and end of class is not rare.
That's good, thank you.
Any other comments or questions from board members?
I do have one small inquiry under page forty-four in the transcript section. Where it says, current students and graduates are able to make transcripts requests. Should we also include the parents in that line?
Well, parents may not be able to do if the kid is over eighteen and graduated because at that point. They lose that right to get your kid's transcript. So that is an adult privilege. Um, we generally work with kids.
Right, so should, uh, can we include that for uh, parents if the student is under eighteen?
If they're under eighteen, they can get it. And that's with um, all of our data. So any parent that is of an eighteen-year-old or young, or younger than eighteen, they have the right to any academic records and so forth.
So Nolan, are you talking about the sentence under transcripts on page forty-four?
Yes.
If it were to say, current students, comma, parents, comma, and graduates, is that what you're kind of?
Yeah, that's uh, so the other week I had a former parent of the district reach out to me, uh, expressing some frustration over receiving transcripts. And so that's just kind of where this uh, inquiry comes from over uh, making sure that's reflected in our handbook here for students and parents.
I wouldn't necessarily add parents because parents can't get it if their kid has graduated. So that's.
Yeah, and we have had situations, uh, Nolan, where, you know, I know over my four years here. Where we have had parents of students who have graduated, who try to attempt to get the transcripts. However, if a student is over the age, you know, obviously they've graduated, they're over age, age eighteen. Um, the parent obviously is not able to do that, just based on what we can do from a record standpoint.
And parents do have access to Skyworth that when they're here, that they can get any information as they want.
If, um, just a question, cause I think about sometimes scenarios my, uh, young adult children are in. Say, um, a young adult graduate needs their transcript, but they can't request it. Could, could they sign off and have, give their parent permission to do that?
We have had students who have provided parent permission for various records under the records law.
Thank you. So that sounds like we're covered then.
We are covered for all of that area.
Any further discussion on that, Nolan?
Uh, no.
Anything else from any other board members? Is there a board member who would like to make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six student parent handbook?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six student parent handbook as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Nolan by, sorry, motion by Nolan, seconded by Kenneth. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed say nay. And that carries unanimously. Thank you. The next item for discussion is the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six co-curricular code of conduct.
And I'll have Kelly Frings come if you don't mind. I just want to preface that we did have an athletic council this year that did look over the handbooks. So the input of those changes was not just done by Mr. Helms and Ms. Frings. It was done by the council. So we did have parent input and they did represent all different areas of Hartford.
We did, and there was about a dozen individuals on there, coaches, staff, community members. And so I think that's important to note and that they viewed probably over a dozen um, other districts. Code of Conduct, things of that nature. So I'll let Ms. Frings jump in on that.
Yeah, stealing my fire a little bit there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And I definitely think this is a great opportunity to thank uh, and acknowledge the athletic council that we did work with. Those were parents, coaches and other community members. Um, we challenged them to look at, I would say, over twelve different school districts, handbooks, code of conducts. Um, and really give us some critical feedback. Um, I know from year to year, that can get sort of mundane to just be looking at the same codes. And then what I think they gave Scott and I was an opportunity to make our documents more readable. Um, it's something as simple as the table of contents, I think is, is important for us to add. So that when parents, when families are looking for certain information, they can readily find it. Um, another aspect you'll see that we added was just a list of the sports and the offerings, the activities and the advisors, people to be able to reach out to. To know, you know, for families to who to get in contact, um, in regards to what. I think that was important additions for us. Um, you'll also see the athletic eligibility, um, in all three documents, that formatting has changed. And that was some critical feedback we got, just to make sure that being a very important part of what we do is as easy as possible for, for parents. And for students to comprehend.
Did you want to add at all? I know Mr. Helms had mentioned just with the W I changes and the NIL and the contact days that that was added as well to, I know you're kind of talking, summarizing all of them right now.
So the N I L, the name, image, and likeness policy was adopted by the state of Wisconsin. And I know we added some verbiage to reflect essentially what the W I has adopted. Um, with those who maybe are unfamiliar with the policy, it's the ability for student athletes to be able to promote and receive benefits essentially off of their own personal brand. Um, so we did put in some language that reflects exactly how the W I had stated it, um, as well as the contact days because those have recently changed as well, so we adopted the language that they had instilled.
Do board members have any questions? I have a really trivial question. Um, I noticed on this, this handbook as well as the last one, there are just a couple of pages that almost look like they're scanned in or screenshots or PDFs, does that get cleared up? Like I'm wondering to just load kind of slow for us, does that look cleaner in the final?
It looks cleaner on our end, um, uh, there we did do some carryover, um, that'll look different, I think, on the final cut of it. Um, right now, a little bit of his, eh, Amy Wald has the ownership to that document, when she comes back on Monday, that'll be something we can easily clean up for the sake of clarity, I know exactly what you mean, because it just looks sort of more pixelated.
And I know what you mean by documents are in certain computers, Marie and I dealt with that a couple of months ago, right? That was a nightmare to try to get things transferred over and looking good, so I understand, thank you.
Thank you to Ms. Frings and Mr. Helms and that athletic council, you guys did a phenomenal job, really making it more readable with the charts and so a lot of great work that went into that.
You got a lot of great help, thank you.
What an awesome idea to have a council for that, I think that's fantastic.
Yeah, it helped to have a little bit more brain trust than just the two of us sort of, uh, batting the same ideas back and forth for sure.
That's awesome. Um, any comments or questions from board members? Is there a board member who would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six co-curricular code of conduct as presented.
Is there a second?
I second.
Motion by Nolan, second by Tiffany, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay, that carries unanimously. The next item is the twenty twenty-five, twenty-two-six coaches handbook.
I think there's a lot of carryover in all three of these, so I don't have anything additional to add for that particular one. I don't know if Ms. Frings does, I'd imagine not, um, but.
She looks pretty comfortable. No, no, you're good, you're good, I think you're, you're confident in what you said before. Any questions or comments from board members? Is there a board member who would like to make a motion?
Motion to approve the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-two-six coaches handbook as presented.
I'll second.
Motion by Ken, second by Nolan, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed say nay, that motion carries the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six co-curricular code of, sorry, the coaches handbook has been approved. Uh, the next item is our twenty-five, twenty-six advisors handbook. Any discussion or questions?
A motion to approve the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six advisors handbook as presented.
Perfect, motion by Nolan, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kenneth, all those in favor of approving the twenty twenty-five, twenty-two-six advisors handbook as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed say nay, that passed unanimously, thank you. The next item is our twenty twenty-five, twenty-two-six technology handbook.
A thank you to Ms. Verhans for reviewing that technology handbook, and I know she is here for any questions. I don't believe there was any changes from last year.
I do not, thank you. Is there a board member who would like to make a motion?
I'll motion to approve the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six technology handbook as presented.
I second.
We have a motion by Nolan, second by Tiffany, to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty-two-six technology handbook as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed say nay, and that carries unanimously. The next item is our twenty twenty-five, twenty-two-six job descriptions.
And many of our, we have a number of revisions on job descriptions listed in board docs. And many of those are simply, uh, title changes in terms of names, things of that nature. And also, you know, looking at certainly, for example, like special ed specialist, we really, as a, as a staff, looked at the student needs and how can we be most effective and efficient in our supporting students and staff, and so that, um, I guess I would point out that would be one in particular, or kind of an arrangement, or, or the, looking at the different uh, responsibilities and roles of various administrative assistants, so for example, our student service assistant, administrative assistant in terms of, you know, changing some of those roles and responsibilities. But overall, much of the revisions are related to particular name changes, job titles, things of that nature. Uh, Mr. Nelson, is there anything else?
Um, we brought back the speech and language pathologist, uh, job description, um, because we've hired an, uh, eighty percent employee this year. Where in the past years, it's been a contracted service, uh, so that one came back in, and earlier this spring, the board approved um, a learning support assistant two position, um, that is being utilized. Um, so that one was again a collaboration to put together a job description of what that, uh, roles and responsibilities are for that person. Uh, along with, um, with all the admin assistant changes we've had this spring, um, we came up with a more um, admin assistant to the high school, so a more uh, position that's covering a lot of different pieces, and I know that, uh, Ms. Romlo and Ms. Re- uh, Lamb put that together, um, kind of to, to make sure it would fit the needs of the high school leadership team, uh, so I want to thank them for, for working on that.
I'd like to thank the team for, for their work on this, some of these have minute changes, some of them have significant, and it's really nice that you're staying on top of this. Having been here for the number of years that I was, there was a period of time when job descriptions were neglected, and then we had a lot of work to do to get them where they needed to be, so thank you very much for continuing to work and making sure that these are accurate and applicable. Um, any questions from board members?
I will motion to approve the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six job descriptions as presented.
And I will second that, any further discussion? We have a motion and a second to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty-two-six job descriptions, um, as presented this evening. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed say nay, and that motion carries. The next item for discussion is the twenty twenty-five, twenty-two-six mentor handbook.
And thank you, Dr. Schliwe, for really outlining those expectations for new teachers, mentors, instructional coach, so I'll let you take over.
Sure, I definitely want to just highlight the work that our instructional coach Mallory Smith has done. Um, it's been an incredible amount of work in the last two years, she's been by herself as our only instructional coach. Um, so really taking this on singularly, um, to build up the mentor program for new teachers in terms of supporting them with their instruction and outlining what expectations are. Um, we are continuing to expand how to support teachers who are new to our district by also building connections with the larger Hartford area schools community. These changes, as well as some additional supports from Mallory, are indicated in the handbook.
Thank you, uh, board members have any questions?
I just want to say great job because in my areas of working to mentor programs can be so beneficial to get people up to speed fast, so, thank you.
Anything else from board members?
I will motion to approve the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six mentor handbook as presented.
Second.
Motion by Nolan Jackett, second by Kenneth, um, to approve the mentor handbook for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay, and that has been approved. Uh, next item for discussion is our twenty twenty-five, twenty-two-six student meal prices.
And Ms. Gloria Oso will give an overview of some of the changes and not changes, so she always does a phenomenal job and job in the food and nutrition services, so thank you, Monica.
Okay, the proposal in front of you, um, as you see, has, um, no changes to the breakfast price. Um, we have experienced a decline in usage of that program as the prices increased the past couple of years. So we would like to keep the price stable to continue to encourage stu- student use to support their academic needs. Um, lunch, we are looking at a twenty-five cent increase that is in line with other area school districts um, and has been stable for the past two years, so this will be the, uh, increase from two years ago. And then we are continuing our after-school meal program, which is a free program to students, and that is a federally, fully federally funded program. Um, at this point in time, we are able to continue it through the twenty-eight, twenty-nine school year. And then we have a history of waiving our reduced price meals for students, able to provide that at no cost. Um, which right now the, uh, federal limit on those meal prices is thirty cents for breakfast and forty cents for lunch, so we are asking to waive that for students who qualify for the reduced price meals. Do you have any questions about the meal prices?
No, I just want to say that, um, thank you for your work over the years, you really truly have been such a great professional for, for us, and I appreciate it. And I like the detail you have in this, this, um, sheet in our packet, even stating that the last item you mentioned estimates at being about a thirty-five-hundred-dollar cost for the upcoming year. And it looks like we have funds for that.
We do.
Wonderful, thank you. A question I have for you Stacy is, um, I understand that we have funds for that, but because this is a cost for the district, should we do a roll call vote on this one?
I think that would be a good idea, just to clarify too, it actually comes out of the Food Service Fund fifty, uh, which certainly has a healthy, uh, balance for future needs, so, yes, I would do that.
Okay, thank you. Um, any questions or discussion from board members?
Uh, I will motion to approve the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six student meal prices as presented.
And I will second it, um, as discussed, we will do a roll call vote just because there is a li- a little bit of, um, cost and shifting of funds there. So I will go ahead and start the roll call vote, aye Tiffany?
Aye.
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 Thank you, that has been approved. Next item for discussion is our twenty twenty-five, twenty-two-six parking lot fees.
And so as we're looking at the first parking lot, parking lot A, which is our main parking lot, we are looking to basically essentially remain unchanged in terms of our fees, so at twenty-five dollars. We're looking to move lot B, which is across the street, a recommended change from ten to twenty-five, so that we're consistent in our parking fees. And then for lot D, our new parking lot, we're looking at a recommended charge of twenty-five dollars, and then those three amounts would allow for our consistent charge across the parking lots. We will continue to use colors, so there's a different color for each parking lot, they do not remain the same every year, obvious, for obvious reasons in terms of students, um, being able to use that again the following year. So we do switch up the colors, but each parking lot is a different color, and that in terms of the process, uh, Ms. Rosma has done a really nice job, um, navigating that. And so she is putting out basically the processes, a message goes out on Parent Square eh, with a Google form link, and seniors have that first opportunity the first few days, then juniors, then the rest of the students. And so I also, uh, we included in there the rates for districts, you know, within the North Shore and around us uh, as far as what they charge for parking, and so we are the lowest, um, overall, essentially in general in terms of student parking at twenty-five dollars.
Thank you. Um, any comments or questions from board members? Or is there a board member who would like to make a motion for action?
I'll motion to approve the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six parking lot fees as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Nolan, second by Kenneth, to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty-two-six school year parking fees as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay, that motion carries, thank you. Uh, next item for discussion is the twenty twenty-five, twenty-two-six course fees.
Thank you, and I, I do want to make a note, um, that this is just in line with the discussion around, um, student fees in regards to meal prices or parking lots. This is just an informational piece. The board did approve course fees for the upcoming school year twenty-five, twenty-six back in November. Um, typically those go in October, November, when updated course proposals are approved because those are attached, um, with those courses. Course fees are approved in October or November so that students and parents when planning for the next year's courses, have all of that information available to them at that time. Um, additionally, it does allow us time to be able to update those fees in Skyward. Or if there's a new fee that needs to be added, it allows us time to add that new fee prior to the annual rollover which occurs in July, so once that rollover happens, all of those fees will be added to student accounts, um, which is why we typically take it for an action item in October, November when the board approves any, um, course changes. So again, just a little bit of information for you in terms of what those course, um, fees are, why they typically go earlier rather than coming in July with something such as meal prices. Um, when that typically comes in the summer, it is so that our families have all of the information the year prior when they're planning for the year ahead. Were there any questions with that?
No, I, I think, um, it's great to review them again, because I think this is the time of year where when kids come in at the beginning of August, as a board member, I hear oh my gosh, you want to hear the size of the check I had to write at the school, so it's great to have all these in one place. So I appreciate you guys bringing them back again for informational purposes, so we can review them.
And that's why we do like to take them in the fall as well, so that when students are selecting their courses for the following year, we're hoping that they're, um, reviewing that planning guide with their families so that they can see, um, the courses that they're planning to take and the amount that would potentially be applied in July when that rollover does happen.
Thank you. I think it's also a good piece to have out there for the public, just in case there is anybody or an organization who might want an, an opportunity to donate something to the high school too. Thank you. Um, any comments or questions from board members?
Are we looking to approve this again, even though we already did last?
It's just for discussions, for information, we don't need to do a formal approval. Um, hearing no further discussion, I think we're going to move forward on the agenda then. The next item is our Fund Forty-Six transfer.
So at the end of each fiscal year, if our revenues are more than expenditures, one of the options that, uh, board has is to potentially transfer some of those funds, um, to Fund Forty-Six, which is a long-term capital improvement, um, fund. Um, that fund was established back in twenty fifteen, um, from what I can see is, was used once in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year when we purchased, um, Gipmar and the softball fields from Joint One. Um, currently, the, the fund has about a thousand dollars in it. Um, this year, um, as, as we had hoped, um, we underspent our budget by about just over two and a half percent, right, so, but on a twenty-one million dollar budget, that's a sizable number, uh, leaving us the opportunity to do this, um, we can only use it on items that are on our ten-year capital improvement plan. And typically what those are would be things that would potentially help offset some expenses in our Fund Ten Buildings and Grounds budget. Um, they're going to typically be bigger items, um, in the case of, um, we'll probably what we'll need to do is bring back our capital improvement plan and, and go through that with the board uh, before you would make any decisions of what you may potentially spend that on. Some districts like to build that fund up a little bit over a couple of years. Um, and, but there might be an opportunity depending on the, uh, referendum dollars, uh, with our our projects, that there might be the need, um, if we see a need, um, we might be able to use some of those dollars to do some of those pieces that are capital improvement projects. If the board doesn't want to do the transfer, then the money would just go into Fund Ten Fund Balance, uh, as it has, as we did last year. Uh, I didn't bring anything last year, it was my first year, my first budget, I wasn't a hundred percent certain as to where we were going to land. The board can do it either before June thirtieth, or they have up to July thirtieth to apply it back to the end of June. Um, so that's what we're looking for, the board to approve this four hundred thousand dollar transfer to Fund Forty-Six. Um, from a, from an accounting standpoint, be booked to June thirtieth and be part of last fiscal year because that's where the dollars were tied to, uh, for that.
Thank you for explanation, um.
Is there a current plan on, uh, what that four hundred thousand dollars would be spent on?
We, we don't, we have our ten-year capital improvement plan, um, but again, I think we'd like to bring that back to the board um, to just review it first and understand what we have, as Tracy has it laid out for each of the ten years of what she has ideas and, and plans for, um, we'd want to look at. of what she has ideas and, and plans for. Uh, we'd want to look at that just so the board understands it first. And then probably come back at a later date beyond that if we wanted to recommend using funds from Fund Forty-Six to pay for some of those pieces. So, um, there's still a few steps in place there that we would, uh, bring to the board before we have a formal recommendation. Um, and, and again, I would look at it as one of those pieces where it's those one-time items that we're trying to replace. Um, that maybe we don't have the money in our, our Fund Ten year-to-year budget. And we know that that budget is, is, is stretched every year. So this allows us that opportunity to maybe pick some of those things off that are bigger ticket items. Um, I think in, you know, I would liken it to this last year with the money we spent on new rooftop units, right? That could have been a potential expenditure from Fund Forty-Six if we had dollars in there uh, and not have that come out of, of the Buildings and Grounds budget, um, directly.
Thank you, Rob. And thank you for the transparency and being honest about how we'll, we'll see how we want to potentially spend the four hundred thousand in the future, right?
Um, it's great that we're passing the referendum and we're replacing all of these, uh, HVAC units, rooftop units, um, air handlers, and a large section of roofing. But twenty years from now, I don't want to see us in the same position. So that's why it's very important that we do start putting money into Fund Forty-Six so that twenty, thirty years down the road, we have the funding for these projects and we're not asking for another referendum.
Wonderful. So it sounds like we have some, some potential bills that we could use this money for.
Yeah, I think anytime we, we look to spend that, we're going to be purposeful and make sure it's the right expenditure for the district and thinking in that long-term thought process.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any questions or comments from board members? Um, hearing none, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the transfer of four hundred thousand dollars from the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five General Fund Ten to Fund Forty-Six Long-Term Capital Improvement Trust Fund. Is there a second?
I second.
Motion by Tracy, seconded by Tiffany. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote. We'll start with you, Tiffany.
Aye.
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 Aye. And that has passed. Thank you. Um, next on our agenda, there are just some future dates listed there. Again, those board workshop and, and regular board meeting dates are listed for you. Um, if there are any possible future agenda items, you are free to voice them now or please email me or Stacy. Is there anything a board member would like to bring up? Okay, then we'll move forward. Um, next on our agenda is a closed session. I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight five one C considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Nineteen point eight five one C specifically administrative compensation and performance evaluation. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, I believe, by Nolan to go into closed session. We'll do a roll call vote in a closed session, starting with Heather.
Aye.
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 And we're going to close session.